And ask everyone to rise for the singing of the National Anthem. Thank you to the National Film Board and to the Grand Prairie Boys Choir. We will now have before you the minutes of the City Council meeting of Monday, May 29th. Assume everyone has read them for errors or omissions. Their final accept a motion.
Okay, thank you Mayor Rice. I'll move the minutes of the City Council meeting held Monday 29, 2017 be approved.
Hey, please vote. Please vote. It's saying... Oh, okay, it's over here. Nice. Hey, that motion carries with a little stress. And we now have adoption of the agenda with the council's concurrence. Going to suggest that we modify the agenda somehow. And that we move item 9.2.1, which is the tender for the Community Knowledge Campus Grandstand Construction, to be held immediately following the delegation portion of the agenda. I'm doing that because we have two members of council on the phone, Mayor Given and Councillor O'Toole. Rather than have them sit on the phone, if we have the vote, everyone will be able to hear from the people who have come to give us input, and yet we're not tying them up on the phone. So with council's concurrence, I would accept a motion to that effect. There, all right, and... Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move council adopt the agenda and make item 9.2.1 tender T 343317. Community Knowledge Campus CKC Grandstand Construction, a special order to be held immediately after item five delegations.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just find this kind of a little bit out of line. I think it's in line. You can do it. But all the other phone-ins we had, we never asked it to be moved up, I don't believe. And I just never, I don't see the reasoning why we have to move it up. I won't be voting for it, and I don't understand why the request is.
All right, any other comments? If not, please vote. All right, and that motion does carry with two opposed. Okay, now we have the delegation portion of the agenda. This portion of the agenda is open to anyone who wishes to speak to council, except for those items that may be the subject of a public hearing. There is one person who has notified us that they wish to speak, so we will ask them to come forward first. That was the motion. We power wheelchair accessibility within the city. Michelle Sutley has advised us that she wishes to address council. Welcome, and please identify yourself for the Legislative Services Manager.
Deputy Mayor. I'd like to introduce to you and to council Michelle Sutley. Michelle and I have been working for about a year, and she's learning how to be a more effective self-educator. And she has asked if she could share some of her thoughts with you. And we agreed that since sometimes when we're under stress, as you know, I do that very well, we get our words tangled. So we agreed that I would shadow what I heard her say, so everyone can understand what her comments are, if that's okay. Is that clear? Excellent. No, one hundred and five. Avenue. Yes, so the power chair is to get, it gets planted too fast, and then it takes you into the traffic at that point? And so you use that corner a lot, right? Because that's close to your house.
Yeah.
So then you become less independent. And how do you go with it? Is that, did everybody understand? Is there anything else that you want to?
Thank you, Michelle, for coming. And the only thing I want to include, I wasn't quite sure on the Ave and the street, it was 105th Ave?
Resources, the corner, southwest corner of Resources Road and 105th Avenue. It's directly across from the hospital.
Okay, we're gonna, hey, thank you.
And when we were talking about this initially, Michelle's friend also identified that the railroad tracks were difficult to cross at that point as well. And I don't know if that's going to be addressed through the parking repairs, but I thought I might throw that in there too. I realize that there's a bigger issue when it's road railroad tracks.
And one final one, thank you, Mayor Rice. Something about the buttons, because I know code changes and they've gotten bigger, and maybe when it was built they were smaller. I thought there was access, like I'm missing that point in the library about accessing it and that we can. Michelle, explain that, or Mika, or about the library access she was commenting on, is that to go to the wa, like I need to know kind of where that was at. That, that was my final question. Thank you. Michelle?
Any other questions for Michelle? Michelle, what happens at the end of the council meeting, we deal with delegation business and your issue will be dealt with at that time. Thank you. Oh, we encourage you to stay. Councillor Radburn?
Deputy Mayor Rice, further delegation. Come tonight. Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming. Anything further? Thank you, Mika. Very well done. We echo Councillor McLean's statement that it takes courage. Thank you. We now have, is there anyone else who wishes to address council on any topic? Anyone who, that is not the subject of a public hearing, but any other topic, please come forward and identify yourself.
A little ignorant to city protocol, so we're actually here to give a few words to support discussion for the Community Knowledge Campus.
Perfect. No, you're right, you're right on cue.
I'm Lionel Robbins, the Chair for the 2018 Alberta Summer Games.
Chris Lutella, the President of the Bantam Football League, Head Coach of the Camp Warriors, and Administrative Assistant for the Adams Football League.
Thought about bringing all the players in again, but we thought that's already been done with, so. We just wanted to come as, I guess, and state our show of support on behalf of the games and from the football program. We see a very important project in the Community Knowledge Campus Grandstands. It was kind of a key focal point of our, of our planning for the facilities and the games themselves. And I guess all I wanted to bring forward is that if this is, if this vote is as a matter of whether it ever gets done or not, that's one thing. If it's a matter of doing it now or doing it later. I have two arguments for doing it later. Obviously, the first one is we're hosting a provincial class event. That doing it now would put us in a place to showcase this new facility. And secondly, we all know that things don't get cheaper, they get more expensive. And, you know, obviously the concern that if it's not an affordability issue now, that it's, it's going to become a lot more money in the future, especially as the economy rebounds and gets more robust, and we have trouble finding trades again. And we've all seen that with a lot of our facilities. So I just wanted to show my support and throw it out there that for no other reason than it would be a really fantastic facility to showcase to 6,000 people from outside of our area for the rest of the province, and show them that we're building some legacy sports, just like we did in 95 and in 2002.
I just came to, obviously I'm not a total foreigner to most of you. I have sat on many committee meetings. I did sit on the committee to establish design of this grandstands. I sat on the committee to determine the turf when it was built. I've donated and done hundreds of volunteer hours to football, to hockey, since I moved to the community in 2002 now, and 2005. It's important to the community, it's important to us. I think it's very important to share that, to back up what Lionel said, this isn't going to get cheaper. We have a facility we spent a certain amount of money on right now that is being accessed and used to a extremely high level, comparatively speaking to a turf field in other areas. Second it opened, it's been used over 1,000 hours a year. But at that level, until we build the grandstands, nothing more will get done with this facility, and it will not ever see its peak and its total use value. Because we are using it to the max ability we can with the facilities that are there. Until provincial standards are met, it will never see a provincial game past Bantam, which is junior high school. We will never see anything higher than a Bantam-level provincial game potentially, and definitely maybe a little bit of camp usage, but nothing to the scope that that grandstand will open to the city. I know that there was a provincial synchronized dance competition that just happened here, and it brought, with real steam numbers, $168,000 for a weekend event. Football jamborees could bring double, triple that. Much less events that we could hold once that facility is there and useful. All the way from exhibition games, maybe not to CFL level like Fort Saint, or Fort McMurray Saw, but definitely for CIS and U-Sports and junior football. There's quite a bit of interest that was raised. The Edmonton Eskimos, when they were up here, actually did come tour the facility with some city employees and myself. They were very interested in maybe coordinating and bringing in some sort of camp at that facility once it's done. I think it's, it's a huge potential for sports tourism in the area. I think it's a huge benefit for all of our programs in the area, and it's the only way that our continued growth will happen. As we're well aware, we just had a local person be involved in the Stanley Cup Final. We've had local people play at the CFL level. We've had a county, a peace county person drafted first overall. We've seen quite good success with scholarships and that, and that could only increase with more exposure. I think that with a facility that's, really to be honest with you, is essentially being seen almost everywhere else in Alberta, besides being up here, that that would open up the door for us to obtain that next level of exposure and support and sports tourism for our young men. I know there's lots that have a goal of having a scholarship to go to U-Sports and get a degree. We've seen them at the hockey level go and do that and come back and be very, very important to our community when they come back, just definitely with this junior storm. And there's absolutely no reason that we can't see that at the football level as well. These boys go out, use football to get a degree, further their lives and come back and enrich Grand Prairie and the area when they're done with that.
I apologize too. I should probably have mentioned on the phone we have Mayor Given and Councillor O'Toole joining us. So they are joining us. I have a question, if I may. And it might, might be my misperception, but it almost seems to me this is kind of like the little project that grew. We started out by identifying that we needed the grandstands. And then all of a sudden, or maybe not all of a sudden, but over the course, it seems like they've become rather supreme. Is that accurate, or is?
Being part of the design committee, I actually have quite a bit of knowledge about that, not just as a volunteer and someone that's helping out with it. That always is going to be the perception that they grow. We actually designed it in a fairly tight window to try and take advantage of the lower economy and hopefully getting a better bid. Fortunately, that didn't really follow through. And really, the overage that is being represented is really just how much the economy's come back. It has nothing to do with the design. The design that we've put forward is the bare minimum design that will meet provincial standards, so that that facility into the near future will, will be able to host any level of competition, which was confirmed in a letter from Football Alberta and Football Canada. There's no extra aboves and abeyons. The, the design of the change rooms are a little bit more complex looking because they are to serve both soccer and football, but necessarily didn't add a lot to the expense because it's just a couple of rolling doors. The privacy shields and the accessibility to certain facilities like the showers and stuff like that, most of that came by bylaw and are required, as we are required to have, the first presentation's a good representation. We do have to have these facilities meet handicap standards, even though they are dressing rooms for a athletic field, which added some into the design as well. So certain things that the design company put on that were extras and above board were cut by the committee, and then certain things got added as required by bylaw code and, and so forth. One of the bigger hitters was actually the heating and the air conditioning to make it a year-round facility. Originally, that wasn't going to be the goal, but certain things came into play where it has to be now, and, and that added a lot of money as well. So this is definitely not a world-class facility in the sense that it's going to be like Mosaic Stadium in Saskatchewan for the Roughriders. This is not state-of-the-art. This is the minimum requirements to meet what we need to move forward past the level we're at, and a minimum level that will continue and function well and serve us well, where there won't be a lot of immediate usage where people say this is missing, or that's missing, or this is missing.
The line is, Councillor Radburn, but before that, if, if I may, did I say there was a kitchen in there?
No, there is a concession space. It is bare-bones space with electrical outlets and a counter, that's it. And it will be probably offered for leasing to a food company, tendered for a food company, and they'll be supplying all the equipment. There's, there's nothing in there that's actually other than electrical plugins for them to bring in their equipment. It's bare-bones space for a concession.
Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. Lionel, my question's to you, and Chris, thanks for, both of you for being here tonight. The reported committee kind of updated us in terms of the Summer Games grant submission to the provincial government was not approved. So I want to confirm that, and then ask if you'll be applying again. And if you were successful, would you see all or part of that money, that grant money, to help with this facility?
So to answer the first question, yes, we were, we were denied the grant. The wording of the letter was such that, that it was not a matter of them not feeling the project was worthwhile, but that there simply wasn't the remaining funds in that for this cycle. So the letter did indicate that we are able to apply again, and I believe this fall. And to answer your last question, 100%, we are prepared to back that again. We put in, I think, a very strong application, and I'd like to think we got turned down simply for the reason that they didn't have the money for what we asked for.
After the fact?
Sorry?
Can you apply after the fact?
You, for most of the C-Fib grants, you have to apply while you're in the process of building. So the idea is to apply in the fall. There are some after-the-fact grants that you can, you can put in, but not to that level of money. So our plan would be to go into the fall and ask again, with no guarantees. But like I said, they didn't say, "We don't feel that your project is worthwhile." It's just the, the trough.
Anything further? Anyone have any questions for, I'm sorry, Councillor Radburn, you're done? Councillor Thiesen?
Thank you very much, Your Highness. Thanks for being here today, gentlemen. I like to see the passion that you're really into making something happen like this in our, in our community. But my question really is around the year-round facility, and maybe Lionel, it's not directed at you, it's more to you, Chris. For a year-round facility on AstroTurf Field, what kind of, what kind of sports were discussed as to what that field can, can hold?
Well, originally, again, the, the presentation that we designed originally was not to be a year-round facility. It was meant to be shut down and stored for the winter months. I, I'm not, obviously, maybe the city can answer better, what happened to change that? I did miss that part. Kylie will have the answer to that, but it is determined that it had to be a year-round facility. There is a classroom on top that does make it an educational component that can be rented year-round. There are activities that do happen year-round. The field itself would, would obviously, with snow removal being a factor, and temperature would be probably very limited use as far as football's concerned or soccer. Although we do begin our seasons and are right now for at least two to three months doing indoor at the County Sportsplex, that when the snow is cleared off the turf, if the weather's good enough, could be held on synthetic turf as long as it doesn't have snow on it. So there is a potential there, because right now you have to book two years in advance to try and get a spot in that January, February, March, April timeline at the county. And then obviously there's the indoor soccer field as well, but it's mostly soccer as well. So there is that window in the early spring. So, there is that window in the early spring, late winter, that you could actually see some usage on the field if the snow's cleared off of it. As long as the dressing rooms are warm, you can go and hide and warm up and coming back. Obviously, we play well into November, which can be just as nasty as January, February, so weather's not totally an off-put to football in Canada. And that sort of thing. So, there is a potential for that to open up, not originally thought of in the original plan, but now that it is a year-round facility, definitely the classroom opens up for usage on the top of the stands and the field itself could definitely actually see some usage if the field's open too, because up to this point, we haven't officially opened the field to be used until the snow's gone. So that would also be something that would have to be worked at that level, but it's definitely not a no-go. There is definitely some room there to extend hours. And like I said, right now, Pee-wee is starting well into, by the beginning of April, end of March. So there is a window there where there is a lack of facilities for football in that timeframe, because grass fields just aren't viable at that point. But the turf actually, if the sun comes out a little bit, actually, the black crumb warms up and actually melts up the turf a little bit. So if there's no snow cover on it, it'll actually eliminate any kind of light snow, and it'll actually heat itself up from the sun, and it's usable, it's soft enough to use. Unlike natural where it's frozen through to the ground, and it's like playing on cement, it's not really a viable solution.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of council have any questions?
If I may, I'd also, I know Kylie was waving her hand over there.
Lionel, we'll finish with councils' questions before we move to that. Councillor Radburn, you're good. Any other members of council have any questions for our delegation? Zane?
I just wanted to add to what Chris was saying. What has come into play in January is the National Energy Code, and that was what the change was. We were required to add additional insulation because the facility is being used in October and November. So it wasn't that there was a decision to make it a full year-round facility, it was because a new code came into place in January, and we were required to design to that code.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Anyone else present who wishes to address council on this or any other item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Karna Germsch, I'm with the Grand Prairie Sport Council, and I just wanted to indicate one point, is that Grand Prairie has a sports tourism strategy, and the strategy is to actually leverage the sport organizations that we have locally to create more opportunities for Grand Prairie. These volunteers that are dealing with these sports, so in the soccer realm and the football realm, these guys are ready. There's over, well, 2,000 in soccer as far as membership goes. They're a very strong organization, as most of us know. As you can see, football is very well-supported. Football Alberta, the provincial organization, they're a fan of Grand Prairie, and I believe that there will be a lot more opportunities, and this would be the sport, these would be the sport groups to move it forward if we wanted to do this.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, your highness. Karna, soccer, football, I also wrote down rugby. Have we approached any rugby groups to be involved in the discussion as well?
Yes, we have. Rugby is very supportive, and they would rent and use the field as well. They're a smaller group, but they are growing, and it's a really good organization as well. They are just significantly stronger than the soccer and the football so far.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? If not, I would accept a motion. I would outline the process. After the motion is made, council present in chambers will be asked to vote. That number will not be displayed. Following the completion of the council in chambers vote, councillor O'Toole and Mayor Given will be asked to vote verbally at that point. Then the amalgamated number will be displayed. Okay, so, anyone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Thieson? No, you just happen to have your name writing around there? Is anyone, anyone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Clayton?
Before we move that, make a motion, I just had a couple of questions for administration. Is this an appropriate time?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. Administration, if you could tell me in regards to this facility, is it adaptable? In the future, when there's a soccer field to the west, can this facility accommodate extra bleachers on it?
Deputy Mayor, the plan currently is to have a soccer field on the other side, and to answer your question, it would depend on whether we were planning to include the track. And the track was an addition that was added after the fact, and the track doesn't actually fit on the site very well because it requires removal of the majority of the berm. And when we reach a population of 100,000, we would have to determine where the next track would go, and there isn't enough space on that site to do all of the other throwing activities. So ideally, we would add just a soccer field and probably 400 bleachers just off of the side of that facility. What we've also done is we've put knockouts for the doors and conduit to be able to add the doors for that future when that field is built.
Thank you. I had a couple more. Another question for administration, if you could tell me, in this process at all, was there any phasing considered? Could the bleachers be built and the change rooms be brought in modularly after? Was there any look at simply building the bleachers for the stands and then going in the future with the change rooms?
Deputy Mayor, we did originally look at that before we were actually given direction at the Committee of the Whole to actually build it properly and build it once. So originally, when we had insufficient funds to do the entirety of it, we had looked at the possibility of phasing it. The design, the way it is set up, and with the accessibility from 68th Avenue, it doesn't lend itself to a modular build very well. And once we were given the direction at the Committee of the Whole for the design, all we've done as far as changes is amalgamate things and actually make things smaller to reduce the footprint and hopefully contain the costs. And so essentially, we took direction from Committee of the Whole in November.
Thank you.
Is that all your questions? Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Councillor Rice. So my question is to our city manager. The committee meeting, there was a motion directly to administration to begin the process of seeking support from other municipalities in the area, and I'm just asking if there's any update at this point.
Through the chair, short answer is yes. The process has begun. I've had several discussions with some of our neighboring municipalities. I am reminded in those discussions, though, that these are independent authorities, and they set their own priorities using their own budgeting processes and strategic planning processes. As they were not involved in the early stages of design, concept, tendering, or evaluation of the tender, it may be a difficult process for us to ascertain sufficient priority at this time to get significant involvement. Having said that, there certainly is a willingness to participate with Grand Prairie in fact. I believe at least two of the individuals that we've spoken to on this front expressed a desire to work on this very closely. The regional support council is a very high priority for it. So I wouldn't say no, but we have not pressed to a decision point on community participation from other municipalities.
Thank you. All your questions? Okay, Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, your gloriousness. I have three questions, actually. One, I'm going back to the year-round facility aspect of it. So, we've got soccer, we've got football, we've got rugby. It's a year-round facility. How are we going to utilize it in the wintertime when there's snow on the turf? The track's not big enough to fit in the place, like I can't foresee cross-country skis going on the track, but have we, have we looked at for this year-round facility, how we can have year-round sports played on this facility?
Through the chair, we also have a speed skating level there, and so what we had looked at is the possibility of doing speed, long-track speed skating meets. When the facility is not in use, we were also going to put it as low as possible as far as the temperature in the facility just above freezing. And so it would be mostly, unless there was an event that was regularly being done by speed skating, we have not looked further than that.
Thank you. My other question was, again, around the year-round facility, and you did answer part of it with, I guess, lowering the heating costs, but have we done an operational budget analysis as to, once we have the grandstands operating with a kitchen that we may tender out, but we're also going to need janitorial services and also people to rent out the facility as well? Have we done an analysis on what the extra costs are going to be year over year after this one-time injection of funds to build this grandstands?
Through the chair, as part of the process for bidding the grant, we were required to put in place a five-year operating budget, and so yes, that has been considered. The majority of the costs have been absorbed in the recreation and sport, as well as the Coca-Cola Center operating budgets, in that that is the staff that currently look after that facility now. So the supervisor that is looking after the gyms will be looking after the, her staff will be running that, and right now, the weekly maintenance is being done by the arena tenants, and all of the snow removal is being done by the arena staff at Coca-Cola Center.
Could you, are you able to just enlighten me when you put the operational budgets, a ballpark on what that might cost us annually? I know we'll have some shared staff costs, but if you've submitted this with that, with the grant, just ballpark range is like 400,000, 100,000, 20,000?
It was under 50,000.
Thank you. And I have one final question, too, just in regard to the National Energy Code. As far as making it up to those specs, what is the ballpark range of the cost for actually putting that in compared to what our old budget was to what the new budget total is right now?
I'm afraid I don't have that answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, just a question in regards to grants. What, I know we've lost a couple of grants, and that kind of delayed the project from the onset. What currently have we applied for, for this project? Are there any future ones other than the one we heard about that we plan to apply for?
Deputy Mayor, we originally applied for metropolitan funding through the Finance Department. Susan and I put together a grant, and we were unsuccessful with that. We have also applied for community facility enhancement funding through the foundation with the Catholic School Board, and we were successful in raising $80,000 towards the lighting. And then in assistance with the Summer Games, we put together a million-dollar grant in January, which we will be reapplying for in October.
And then if I could have a follow-up question, and could you speak to any conversations you've had with your counterparts in the regional municipalities regarding the project? Has there been any sort of, at the level, recreation level discussion on, you know, where this fits in the rent recreation master plan?
Through the chair, this was in the works as we were putting together a recreation master plan, and it was identified as a regional facility. So beyond that, there hasn't been a lot of conversations. They've been following it very closely because there was requests and letters sent to them, and so they have followed it closely, though.
That's all your questions? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Rice. Just a quick question, Kylie. I know there's a beautiful facility there that was pretty well-built by the gymnastic community, and through donations and hard work and through rotary over the years, and then the city took over its operation. What's the value that the football team might have donated to build these stands? Is there any money put in by the football team through draws, through raising money? What percentage? How much money?
Through the chair, the football community has supported the facility by being our largest renter. They have not raised funds towards the capital project, but they are a regular renter, and of the 1,000 hours that are used, they would be, probably 70% of the use would be the football community.
Your final question, Councillor McLean? Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. Another question, Ms. Haney, could you tell me what other mid-side cities in Canada, Western Canada, Alberta, whatever you sort of have the knowledge of, have facilities such as this?
I only have the knowledge of what facilities are in Alberta, and I'll read them to you. There's Fort McMurray that has a facility, St. Albert has a facility that's just recently been built, Sherwood Park has a facility that was come online, I believe, last year, and it was about an $8 million facility. Spruce Grove, Edmonton, Redgers in the planning stages for theirs, and theirs will be ready in the next two to three years. Calgary, Cochrane, Medicine Hat, and not 100%, but I think Lethbridge as well.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you. Just a question in regards to the tendering process. If this vote were to be delayed today, how long are we able to delay it until the tender has to be reclosed and then reopened maybe at some point? Is there a time period that we have to have a decision on the tender?
I guess later services want to come in with that, or?
I believe the most concern would be in actually getting it done for the Summer Games. We are a one-year build, and so at this point, if we delay it too much, we're going to miss the building season for this year, and we won't make the deadline of the games. So we're pretty much a one-year build, and we need the facility for the third week in July. I think we're probably 60 or 90 days on the actual tender, though.
Councillor Karen, is that?
Thank you.
Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, your highness. So in regards to the tendering process, I guess, let's say councillor Tarn asked if it were delayed, but what if council were to say no right now? I think, what point, like how long do we have? Is it 30 days, 90 days before we can send out another tender? I know with RFPs, it's another year, but with the tender, how, what's the turnover time there?
I believe it is one year, or be accused of bid shopping.
Councillor, do you have more questions?
I can ask one more question. It just sort of popped into my head. Now, let's say this doesn't go through here today or gets postponed. Has administration thought of any backup plans to help host the Canada Summer Games and how we can make that work for now and move forward with perhaps other funding sources or in a year, a re-tender or something like that? Do we have any backup plans for now? Because for me personally, it just, you know, we agreed on a number, then we agreed on another number, and then it comes back. Obviously, the tender came in higher than we hoped for, but it's almost, for me, it's almost unpalatable is the cost, and maybe that's the cost of these things, but is there an alternative that we have thought of besides saying, well, we'll just borrow it and we'll rush the construction and we'll get her done? Have we, have we thought outside the box and figured out some solutions on the, just in case it might not go through?
Deputy Mayor, the only thing that we had thought of is putting in only bleachers, which doesn't solve the problem that we're attempting to solve, but it would have somewhere for people to sit for the games. And within the budget that's there, there would be enough money to put in bleachers, there would be no amenities. And I think what you would find is a lot of complaints from the community, because we are not actually meeting the community's needs, we're meeting the needs of that one-time event. And so, no, we have not come up with the magic solution other than what we've put forward.
Is it possible, perhaps? I mean, obviously, the community said, well, we don't have change rooms there, we don't have bathroom facilities. I mean, all of our schools are built with like portables attached to them, almost every single one, when they come in and you can remove them and you can place them down, and you can facilitate them with plumbing and electrical and heat, and you can make that happen for relatively cheap. I'm just throwing that out there because that's like a potential another solution if we want to address the potential for complaints if this weren't to go through. Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Councillor Rice. My final question? My final question, I mean, Mayor Rice. Kylie, a quick question. We've seen in the document, too, when it was put forward in the agenda, that, oh, this would be good for the closing ceremonies of the Summer Games. And the opening ceremonies out in Downers, or Museum, has no grandstands. But yet we do have a Legion Field that has lots of grandstands. Was there ever thought, if it didn't go through, the games can be placed, the closing ceremonies in another avenue that we have tons of seats for?
Deputy Mayor, my understanding is the closing ceremonies are actually at Revolution Place. And what we'll be using the facilities for is actually for two football games a day throughout the games and then for the finals and the semifinals. The Legion Field is a grass field and the desire is actually to play on the synthetic field.
Any other questions? You're good? You're good? I have a couple of questions. Now, and I may have already heard the answer to this, but can this thing be, I'll say, taken apart and scaled down? Do we need all the bells and whistles that go with it or could we do components of it? Like, I hear this oval doesn't really fit or whatever, so can we get rid of it or? Who could answer that? How much, how much flexibility do we have before we get, we start walking on the bad side of the law?
Deputy Mayor Rice, we removed 150 meters from the design once we realized that the facility had to come in on budget. And we, if we remove anything else, we will not meet the provincial standard. We are, we've built it as cheaply as we possibly can and as properly as we can to meet the standard and have a facility that will have a 50-year lifespan. We have, we have not gone to a modular solution because modular solutions are way more complex than, they're simpler than what this design actually is. And by the time you specialize it to what it needs to be to meet the standards, this, it's a nice design, but it's not fancy. It just meets the requirements. Their requirements are very, very specific. They're very stringent about how much space there needs to be for viewing for the coaches and for the, you know, the spotters boxes and for viewing and the videoing. And so we've just met the standards. And we've put in enough change rooms to be able to play games back-to-back. So you need four change rooms. So each of those change rooms holds 25 players. You need four change rooms for 50 players. So you can play a game with two teams and have another two teams get ready to play a game with the facility the way it's built. If you take away any more change rooms, then you can play one-off games. You can't play a tournament.
So what about air conditioning and heating if we took that away?
There is no air conditioning. There is only heating. We didn't put any air conditioning in the facility.
I guess, and then my last question, if I may, is what is the expectation of the games when they come here? Are they expecting us to have this type of facility? And was part of those expectations part of what we got the games?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Sure, go ahead. No, just stay there. Thank you. Councilor McLean for your next-to-last question. Oh, okay. Is any other questions or statements? Any other questions or statements? I'm sorry, Councilor Karen.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please proceed.
So my motion will be to postpone this vote for one month period until July 10th. My intent of this is I believe, for me, this project is very contingent on regional funding. I believe this is a regional facility. It's been identified as a regional facility from the outset. It's been talked about in the Joint Recreation Master Plan. And I believe that we need to have regional support for this facility. And for me personally, I, it's not, I don't want to go ahead alone. I think there's too many regional facilities that the city has put in and gone in alone or borne a significant share of the cost and continue to bear a significant portion of the operational costs. And that's not how I want to move forward with this. The intent of the postponement would be to actually bring this to the political level and have council meet with regional councils and to press them on a decision to have, to give us a A or an A. And then council, this council can be informed on, on whether that's a go-ahead and from there can make decisions based on that, that information.
We have Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Rice. I will be objecting to this, saying no, not objecting, but disagreeing with Councilor Tarrant on the one month. I believe it's going to be a close vote tonight and to have it done with. One of the reasons is when we keep hearing from administration, we had a committee, the whole meeting, committee, the whole meeting, we went through all these things. And it was mentioned at the meetings to write a letter with the mayor or to speak to the county of Grand Prairie, the MD of Greenview. And I believe they've been spoken to and they never returned the calls. So that's why I won't be voting in favor of it.
Yeah, I would just urge colleagues to, I will not be supporting the motion either. I think this is a project that, my support isn't contingent upon regional participation necessarily. I still think there is a possibility as we move forward, both with respect to the provincial grant and support from our regional partners. But I think that it is time-sensitive to some degree. And I think it's something that I think we started, this council started this project, and I'd like to see us finish it.
Thank you very much, Chairman Rice. Saying something different every time. I'm going to support Councilor Tarrant's motion. The reason being is that it doesn't take it off the table completely and it still gives us time to act. And sometimes we find the best results at the very last minute. I'll point, in fact, to last night's hockey game. It happened within the last two minutes and the game was over. But I really honestly believe that in terms of this, this field, of this, the magnitude of this entire project and how it's grown over the years, it's almost doubled in its overall cost. And as I said before, the words "unpalatable" have left my mouth, I'm reliving it again. I'm a big supporter of sports and of football, but on the other side of it, too, we also have a lot of citizens of Grand Prairie who are hurting and can't handle increased taxes. And if we can find another way, a better way, whether that's regional partnerships or community-based organizations who are chipping in and, or whether the province decides to give us like a grant out of the blue, that would be really, really nice. But I think a one-month timeline is not going to kill this tender. And I think Councilor Tarrant is on the right page when it comes to like seeking out funding so that we don't have to bear this burden for the next 20 years in debt.
Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. I encourage council to support this motion. I think that this project is, has a strong need in our region and therefore it should be strongly supported by the region in order for this project to make sense to the ratepayers of the city of Grand Prairie. They can't do it on their own. It needs regional support. So therefore, I encourage council to support this motion.
I will chime in. I will not be supporting your motion. I would feel somewhat guilty having been at several meetings where we very proudly told our regional partners, we don't do one-offs. And then to somewhat add, yeah, but here's hoping you do. And we are not, we are not guilty just this time of coming in at the 11th hour and saying, yeah, we know we didn't approve you in the decision-making, the design, the tender, all that, but you know, how about tossing over some money anyways? We, we need very strongly to develop a mentality where we start including our regional partners at the beginning of the process, not when we're feeling the pinch. So, any other comments?
Yes, Councilor Rice?
Yes. Councilor Clayton. Okay, sorry, Mayor Given.
Sure. Thanks, Councilor Rice. Just wanted to speak to the motion to postpone. I think it's important that we acknowledge that the majority of the economic benefits of this development actually accrues to the city. And so for me, that speaks to one reason why the city should make the decision and council should make the decision whether we're for this or not. I agree that there is a strong case to be made for regional support for the venue. And certainly informally, I've had an opportunity to speak to some of the other municipalities and at the political level have seen some indication or acknowledgement that this is a project that's regional in nature. But I am not supportive of putting us in a position where it's highly probable that the site of the CKC is still under construction when we start to welcome the province for the Alberta Summer Games. And I also wouldn't be comfortable essentially putting that kind of pressure, I think, putting that kind of pressure on the other municipalities that we're going to approach, saying, well, you know, either you come in or it doesn't get built. I don't think that that will get us the result that we'd like to look for. And I think we can have a conversation about this and it may not happen in a month. It may take a couple of months. I know that our council would have a difficult time even for something we supported coming up with a few hundred thousand dollars off the cuff. But I think that we will get a positive response based on the work that we've done through the Regional Recreation Master Plan and other work. But I don't think it's realistic to expect it in a month's time. And so I'd encourage council to vote against the motion to postpone and look forward to making this decision tonight for this facility that will have the majority of the economic benefits certainly to the city of Grand Prairie.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Councilor Tarrant, did you wish to close?
You know, just responding to a couple of the comments that were said, you know, I believe the county and the other, the MD and the other municipalities, you know, they were aware of the project. They may be not, were not included in the detailed design, but it was definitely, you know, it's been on the plate for quite some time. And I attended quite a few of the joint recreation meetings and it was something that came up a number of times. And so it was aware, it was agreed to in the Joint Recreation Master Plan that this would be a regional facility. And it's included there in the documents that everybody, all the municipalities have signed off on. So with that, I don't think that they can use the point that they weren't included. Also on that, I do believe that, you know, I think sometimes you need to bring them to a decision point. A lot of times they're, you know, we kind of wiffle-waffle with in terms of our asks and it's kind of all asking, you know, do you generally support it? But I think sometimes you need to put a hard decision point in front of them and move on from there.
All right. It is now time to vote, as I pointed out. As you, after you vote, it will not be displayed until Mayor Given and Councilor O'Toole have voted orally. So please vote.
What a process. I think, are they only allowed to vote for the one versus for the whole?
The Legislative Services Manager says they are to vote on this one.
Deputy Mayor Rice, they have the option of discussing and voting on this item. So if there are two votes, they could participate on both votes.
Okay. So now I remind you, a vote, voting yes means that this item is postponed for one month. So please vote. And seven votes have been cast. Mayor Given, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Councilor O'Toole, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Okay. And... Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, that motion does not carry. Pardon? Can't be a tie vote. Oh, can we see the results again, Raj? Huh? Okay, I thought I counted five. Okay. So we're good? The vote is good or we're count, we're doing it again? We're good? The motion was defeated. Okay. You guys are certainly not making life easy. Okay, is there another motion coming forward? Is there another motion coming forward? Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would make the motion in our package. I would move that council award tender T-30-433-17 Grand Sand Construction Community Knowledge Campus to Southwest Design and Construction Limited in the amount of $4,137,000 exclusive GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications.
Thank you. And again, as I remind you, the vote will not be displayed till Mayor Given and Councilor O'Toole have voted.
So I will speak to the motion if I may, Madam Chair. Thank you. So some of it I'll do quickly because we've talked about some of this at length previously. But I will reiterate, I do think that this is this council's project and so whichever the will of council, I guess, will aside. But I would hope that majority of council supports moving forward and completing this project. I am acutely aware and sensitive and really looking forward to showing off our facilities when people come to Grand Prairie. Sports tourism is a huge market. And I think we will have the right people, the decision-makers here next summer, if we had the facility ready to go. I think that will, will help us in the future to raise our community to a different level with respect to sports tourism. Both football and soccer will be used in the facility. I also see college playoff games, soccer games at this facility. So that's another use that hasn't been mentioned tonight. They're both very significant youth sport organizations in our fair city and they have obviously the passion and wherewithal to, to continue to grow their programs. And this facility will only help in that regard. I do think there's potential revenues to be received. The financial context, I get that. I truly get that. This actually is about a $1.6 million increase in our adventure borrowing. That's the bottom. It's not like the whole $4 million something. We had 3.1 or something. So we are talking, and I know that's significant. But for me, it's debt, but it's a significant investment in community, in our youth. Look at, look at Grand Prairie. The majority of users of this facility are going to be our youth. And we have tremendous community support for these organizations and for hosting these events. So I think for me, my other thing is that I don't want to do the blame game. I don't think the costing thing, it is what it is. You know, we, we weren't aware of this. If we wanted to use this in November, October, November, we had to have to the code, right? We do have to figure out uses for it. I agree. But it, it hurt, that decision, in a cost perspective, and it is what it is. And there wasn't consultant's fault, it wasn't admin's fault, it was partly economy, but it was partly that code thing. So I think that we will garner some use, more use as we move forward. But yeah, I think that kind of summarizes kind of where I'm at. Yes, there is another, another chunk to borrow, but it is exactly the type of facility that we should be borrowing for because we're going to have it for, well, well past the 20 years to pay it off. Thank you.
Also remind council that there's at least a 50/50 chance that we will get provincial funding. Somehow we seem to have forgotten that. So, now we have the vote. Are you ready to vote?
Counselor Rice, may I speak to it?
Sure, sorry.
Sure, just a couple small things. I tried to be quiet during the earlier discussion, but now that we have a motion, I wanted to highlight for council the fact that this was a very competitive tender process. At the committee meeting, we saw in the package that there were actually seven firms that bid on this. This lowest bid that's being recommended was lowest by just about $2 million, $1.8 million less than the high bid. So this was a very competitive process. And I think it demonstrates that we're getting good value for dollar. And the fact of the matter is that a facility like this will cost as much to build. There was a point made about how much community groups contribute to capital facilities. And I, you know, I really appreciate the council member for raising the Gymnix facility. What a fantastic facility. And they certainly deserve to be commended for their contribution, but we have to remember that that is absolutely an anomaly. Community facilities of this scale are built collectively. You know, everybody comes together and contributes to them because it's very rare that any organization can contribute the capital cost to do that. And we don't need to look any further than Canada's, you know, sort of largest sport in terms of hockey. We have many, many hockey facilities. And I don't know that I've seen in Grand Prairie's history, the hockey community come forward with large capital dollars. We recognize that these capital facilities aren't of a scale that community groups can do that often. And so I think it's important that we recognize that. And just to support Counselor Radburn's point about just being a long-winded asset, there is a good logic to using borrowing for assets like this because it ensures that the generation of people that use the asset contribute to its cost. And I think that that's something that we need to acknowledge when building something that, and if we build it well, which is being proposed, it will last a long period of time. And then just finally on the potential for other funding, I think council support tonight ensures that the project goes ahead to construction, will be available for this community on time for the Alberta Summer Games. But it doesn't preclude the potential of other funding coming in, whether from regional partners or from a provincial grant. And administration, my understanding, when we have a project that has borrowing, administration doesn't take on that borrowing until it's necessary. And so certainly should other funding come in for the project, administration simply wouldn't have to borrow to the amount that was approved here tonight. That's all I had to say to Counselor Rice. Thank you.
Counselor Radburn, did you wish to close? All right, please vote. Counselor O'Toole, do you have anything you wish to add?
No, I think between Counselor Radburn and, and Mayor Given, I think those are pretty much my thoughts as well. And I like the opportunity. Thank you very much for allowing me to do this tonight.
Okay, please vote, council. All right, Mayor Given, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor O'Toole, how do you vote?
In favor as well.
Why is that not showing? Oh, there it is. Or that motion. Let me just count here. That motion passes. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you very much for joining us this evening, Mayor Given and Counselor O'Toole. Okay.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we now have back to jet item six, public hearings, bylaw C-1354, road closure for portion of 109th Street. I will call this public hearing to order and ask for an introduction by administration. Who is doing that? Brenda, are you? Okay, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. The city's economic department has submitted an application to close a portion of Road Plan 89824460. This is known as 109th Street between the Casino and Service Inn and Suites and the Den. And it's, we do have a picture up on the, there we go. Additional access to the quarter section has been constructed on 109th Avenue to Highway 43, which leaves this portion of road no longer required. Comments received regarding the existing service, regarding the existing services requiring right-of-way should the road be closed and development, should the land be developed. Closure of the roadway will allow the city to review the road right-of-way for other potential uses. So it's recommended that third reading be given tonight to bylaw C-1354 being a road closure bylaw.
Is there anyone present or any member of council have any questions for administration? Any members of council have any questions? There any, I'm sorry, Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wondering, is there any anticipated uses at this point for this area?
I believe the economic department made the application and will, will be reviewing the road closure for its potential uses.
Counselor Radburn?
So I missed that. Will Mr. Glavine be sharing with us why, why this is being brought forward?
Please come forward, Mr. Glavine, and speak. Joining us is Brian Glavine, our economic development.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. So we've identified this parcel as surplus to the city's need. We've currently been leasing this to the adjacent properties for a number of years. The road has been recently identified as one that will not be built, so it's unnecessary for us to maintain the road right-of-way. And as such, we are applying to close it with the intention of disposing of it.
But then do we lose all our lease money?
Yes, we would lose that, however, we would sell it for profit.
Thank you. Counselor Radburn? Okay, Counselor McLean?
So you mean the casino's going to grow?
Through Deputy Mayor. I'm unsure of what will happen with the land sale.
Anything, any other? Is there anyone present who wishes to, anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Not then, I guess, anyone have any further questions of administration? Not then I will close the public. Do I close it? First, you vote first. Close the hearing. I will close the public hearing and accept a motion. And that would be Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1354 being a road closure bylaw.
Vote, please. Missing a vote, okay. And that vote does carry. Okay, please continue, council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1354.
Vote, please. And that vote does carry. Please continue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would move that council have third reading for the bylaw C-1354.
This vote must be unanimous in order for it to carry. Okay, vote, please. That vote is unanimous and carries. Please continue.
Finally, I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1354.
All right, vote, please. And that vote does carry. Thank you. We move on to now, we have no unfinished business, no reports, Community Growth Committee. And I would accept a motion for the Community Growth Committee meeting of May 30th.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. From the Community Growth Meeting held Tuesday, May 30th as presented.
Any discussion? If not, vote, please. And that motion does carry. Carry on.
And one motion coming from that meeting. I would move that council direct the mayor to write a letter to the appropriate provincial and federal government officials, as well as to local industry stakeholders within the city of Grand Prairie and region in support of continued diplomatic action against the tariffs, tariffs imposed upon Canada's softwood lumber industry.
Kind of ironic to use the word diplomatic. Vote, please. One more vote, please. There we go. And that motion does carry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Anything else from that committee meeting you'd like to?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Community Living Committee of May 30th. And Counselor Tarrant?
Mayor Rice, I will move the Community Living Committee meeting minutes held on May 30th, 2017.
Vote, please. Motion does carry. Is there anything further on that?
No motions coming out of committee. We, we dealt with the one that was discussed regarding the grandstands. Just one item. My apologies. Sorry. I would move that council approve the Affordable Housing Priorities list. And as council can see in the, the agenda report, there was, we had asked administration to come up with a list of housing priorities. As we've heard that the federal and provincial governments are, will be releasing affordable housing dollars in the upcoming year, and we want to be prepared and have a, a list of, of local priorities that we can advocate for when that time comes.
Council, vote, please, to approve the priority list. Waiting, one more vote. There it is. And that motion does carry. And anything you?
Yeah, just one other item. There is the Tiny Hands of Hope Community Organization that we were planning on helping provide a park for. There was an area identified in the industrial park on the west side of town. Committee didn't feel that it was quite appropriate for the, the use and headed use for this community group. And so they, we, we asked administration to go back and maybe find a place that's a little more central, a little bit more not, not in an industrial area.
Thank you. Community Safety Meeting of June 6th, and that would be yours.
Me, my queen. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 6th, 2017 as presented.
Vote, please. And that motion does carry.
Right, and just two orders of business here to go over here. The first being a tender for road rehab and overlay phase four. And I would move that council award tender T-36-552-17 to Wapiti Gravel Suppliers Limited for $1,575,972.44 exclusive GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. Just to speak to this motion, it is phase four, so we did have an $8 million budget on road rehab and overlay. This will be the last of it. I think the grand total of it now is just under $8 million, it's about 7.7 that we spent. So, we are doing good and under budget, which is always a wonderful thing. In case you're wondering where this road rehab and overlay is going, it'll be on the north and south sides of 100th Avenue, the College Park area extending from 105th Street to 108th Street. And that'll just be a road overlay. Then the full road rehab will be happening in Mission Park between 81st and 82nd Ave and as well as the connector road between those two avenues on 106A Street. The street's just gotten to a point of degradation where they have to dig it all up, do the curbing, the drains, sidewalks, gutters, all that stuff, and the road as well. So, I would encourage council to support this motion.
Any discussion? Vote, please. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Rice. I just had a quick question to Director of Community Safety. You asked, it's about total rehab. We're going to be doing it in an area that's only about 20, 25 years old. And I know it was brought up at the meeting where they do analysis of it and it's needed and everything, but it's, sounds pretty bad in a residential area that we have to do a total rehab of rebuild the road, repack it and repave it in 20 years, 25. Are we learning anything from this when developers pass it on to the city? Do we know where areas could be weak? Has that been looked at or are we in the stages?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The lifespan for this type of road is about 25 to 30 years. So we're approaching that lifespan. Administration performs different upgrades depending the life of the asset. For example, between five to eight years, an overlay may be needed or a steel coat. About 16 to 20 years, there is another type of work called full-depth reclamation, that the, the constructor will go deeper into the groundwater base. And at 25 to 30 years, that's typical lifespan for an asphalt road. When we're talking concrete roads, the lifespan is longer, targeting 40 to 45 years. But in this case, asphalt road at, at the local level, we're approaching the, the life of the asset, depending on traffic, of course, but there's natural oxidation of the asphalt, not necessarily because of the traffic.
I want to say thank you, Director Asher, but the other question is, I see that on the main thorough roads, yes, 20, 25 years. This is a residential road. So is this sticking out with a few other areas that could be problems for the city down the road? With a few areas in different subdivisions when they're passed on to the city for money when developers give it?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the city has a monitoring system that we perform surveys of a quadrant of the city. So it's, the full city is being swept every four years. And we're monitoring different features of the road like deflections, alligator cracks on the surface, expansion, contraction due to the freeze-to-thaw cycles. So there's a constant monitoring of these roads. Standards 25 years ago were a little bit different, the same of the quality control. So as, as the, the roads, you know, get older, we're learning at that time, you know, that we have different builders, different contractors, different standards as well. So a road built today will last longer because of the new technologies and, you know, compaction. So we're, we're monitoring, and it's hard to say, you know, there's not a uniform standard for the city. We're monitoring different areas and applying the right injection of cash and upgrades depending the level of service and the condition of the road. And again, it's not only the surface treatment, but we're going down to the groundwater base with the proper bearing capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Please vote. Motion does carry. Carry on, please, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Rice. I would move our second recommendation that council approve that the city enter into a memorandum of understanding to allow fire administration to work together with the municipalities of Strathcona County and Parkland County to further enhance the resiliency for overall emergency communication systems and better prepare for major crisis events which may impact 9/11, public safety answering points, the PSAAP, and dispatching infrastructure. Essentially, this is just a sharing of, of services in the event that we do have a, a major event that would put an undue burden on our, on our 911 call system. If ours were to shut down, we enter into this agreement or this understanding with the Strathcona County and Parkland County. We would then be able to access their 911 services. And if we needed a bit of relief there, they could chip in as well and vice versa for them. So it's a, it's a good intermunicipal collaboration as far as that goes.
Any comments? Counselor McLean? You're on there, and you're not on there? Please vote. All right, and that motion does carry. We have no correspondence. Yeah, all right, and that motion does carry. We have no correspondence. Delegation, I'm sorry, Counselor Thieson.
Sorry, I just wanted to touch on the other two items that were brought up at safety, just very, very briefly. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. We did have two items brought forward by council, one from the mayor, so that council can receive regular updates from the RCMP. That was a discussion behind closed doors amongst council. Bless you, Counselor Clayton. And it now came to the forefront via the mayor. Committee discussed this and how we used to get these updates, and administration said that they have heard us loud and clear, and we will be receiving those updates moving forward in the future. Also, Counselor McLean over here brought forward mandatory bike helmets to be presented as a resolution at the AUMA conference in November, recognizing that there are lots of children that are skateboarding in and around the skate parks, and they're in most skate parks. It's not mandatory to wear a helmet outside of signage. He wants to make sure that this council and other councils and municipal leaders across the province are urging the province to make sure that skateboarders have to undergo the same standards as bike riders. So I look forward to that, coming forward to a future council meeting. Thank you.
Sorry, I skipped over that. So now, no correspondence. Delegation business. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rice. I would like to move, there we go, I would like to move the issues on curb cuts, the bathrooms at the libraries, and railroad crossings be sent to the appropriate standing committee for further discussion.
Any discussion? Please vote. Oh, there is discussion, okay. How silly of me. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Rice. I thought it was really well done, Michelle and Mika coming forward. A couple of events we've talked about, the last two councils I've been on has been mobility issues, and we do believe some of the way we do our curbing and how it's done, this is pointed out to me actually not on FCM, and actually they'll do, you have to do it just as thick as down, but you can cut it with a saw and meet more smoothly, but however they do it. And the other one that I was wondering about is both going in the bathroom, never thought about, but you should have something on the inside as well for mobility to get out. So it was well brought up, and I'm glad they came forward, and I look forward to coming to the right committee.
I believe our city manager participated in the wheelchair day, did you not, Mr. Nickley?
Madam Chair, yes, I certainly did. I spent a day in a wheelchair as part of the Chair Leaders Program. It was an experience I will never forget. I was able to get out of the chair at the end of the day, so I cannot in good conscience say I experienced what it's like to be in a wheelchair, other than to experience the physical and somewhat emotional experience of being in there for a day. I can clearly identify with the comments that we heard earlier this evening about curb cuts and access to facilities. I struggled just getting into City Hall, and in fact was late for a committee meeting as a result. And I can also say that at an emotional level, the loss of independence was quite moving and quite humiliating. So while I do not purport to identify with what it's like to be in a wheelchair, I certainly had a brief experience or exposure to it and changed my views.
Thank you for taking part.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we have council member reports. Oh, we gotta move, sorry. Carry. Oh, it carries. Okay, so council member reports will begin with the Grand Prairie Sports Council. Counselor Radburn, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. Just, actually, we had a sports council board meeting at four o'clock today. So this is my notes from the, from that meeting. Tri Day was happened on June 30th, June 3, June 3. 25 sports, 460 participants. Participants could choose two sports per child. So it was very successful, 130 survey responses, 95% showed excellent or very good in terms of their experience, and many are now choosing to enroll in these sports programs in the future. So it's a success. Signed a memorandum of understanding with the Grand Prairie Volunteer Services Bureau for advertising some services through our website, Facebook, et cetera. We are, our sports council members can get discounts for VSB services. And I think finally I'd just say that a couple of things that, we're looking at another new, another Tri Day in January, February, but we like it. It'll be trying to focus on newcomers, newcomers to our country, to our community, who haven't had exposure to the types of sports activities that we can offer. We'll have others too, but we're trying to focus on that target group as well. And we're also working with, by we, the sports council incarnate, working with Kool-Aid Society again this year because they run a multi-sport summer program, and so we're, she's acting as a resource for them in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rice. I'm just going to speak to our meeting we had on GPREP on June 8th out in, near Claremont, yes, County of Grand Prairie. There has been an agreement to come together for a mutual aid agreement between the Central Peace Regional Emergency Management Partnership, a formalized emergency management partnership representing Birch Hills County, the Municipal District Spirit River, Saddle Hills County, and the Townes Spirit River, and the Village of Rivecroft, each municipal corporation, the Province of Alberta, and as well as with GPREP, and basically for mutual aid on different times. And the reason why council's hearing this first, I, it was voted on to go into this, but on GPREP, we don't have to bring it to our councils. We can vote on it at GPREP alone. I voted against it. I wanted to come forward, just like when you hear the 9/11. I was the only one, and so under the powers of GPREP, they can form agreements, which was new to me, without coming to our councils. So I wanted to bring that. I think it's a positive one without saying, but with saying that, I want to let my council know as your representative on GPREP. So we look forward to a further growth in the Northwest and helping out fellow towns and municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, no, it'll be brief. Don't worry. I only got all of this to go through. Okay, so on May 26th in Peace River, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance had their annual general meeting. In attendance were about 60 people from around the Peace River region. And at the start of the day, we received our annual review and updates to all that are not members or not members of the board of what the organization has been up to and the work that we've done. There was some discussion prior to the AGM on how we hadn't really received any, I guess, scientific presentations on the flow regime outside of our working groups. So for this AGM, we brought in Michael Church and his work on the regulation of the peace and changing a mighty river. And he discussed the flow regime and the effects of the Bennett Dam on the flow of the Peace River and the areas which it floods and the flood levels over the course of the years. In fact, I was listening quite intensely, although I probably didn't understand the grass as good as I could have, but it sounded like he was talking against it, against building dams. But at the end of his presentation, I realized very quickly when someone asked, so what is, what is your idea for the dams that are being proposed on the Peace River now? And he says, well, I think you need to get Site C going and get her done. So, yeah, it was about face. I was like, oh, really? Because it seemed like you were going against it there. But it was a good, it was a good presentation and, and one that we were glad to host. Finally, the big, the big news of the AGM was the release of our Integrated Watershed Management Plan Draft. Now, all of council has, has this in their mailbox, and some of our directors and our city manager have it in front of them as well. And I'll be handing out to the media whenever I see them next. I think they knew. They're like, Chris is talking watershed, let's get out of here. But no, it is very, very good. In case you want to know, there is this pull-out section here. It's the Coles Notes version. So it's about six pages of reading material that summarizes everything in here, the plan in action and all that other work. And we have this nice little postcard as well, where you can give your feedback to the Mighty Peace Watershed online as to how you think the plan is going and if we're on the right track. If we're not, of course, it's just a draft. We're hoping to finalize it by December. We're going to be taking on a tour of the peace here over the fall. Finally, of course, as with all annual general meetings, we did an election of our, of our chair and our vice chair and our other members, secretary and treasurer. I'd just like to inform council that I was nominated for vice chair of the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance and elected as the vice chair. I did give them a warning. It is an election season, though, and if people don't like me after tonight's vote, I could be gone. But they seemed to weather that quite bravely and accepted me as their vice chair, and we were home by five, and this was done in under five. Thank you very much.
The city's grant application to the Community Foundation Canada 150 Fund has been approved for matching funds of $8,000. The installation will be a permanent art exhibit at the Montrose Cultural Center and will be a commemorative photo mosaic in an indigenous theme to celebrate Canada's 150th anniversary. It will be an art piece approximately 23 feet by 11 feet, and it will be a compilation of Canada 150 events throughout the city. And images from this photo mosaic will come from the fabulous five-city Canada 150 events, which is Family Day, Municipal Government Day, Canada Day, Heritage Day, and Alberta Culture Days. So we are working with the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Aboriginal Circle of Services. And as a permanent exhibit, the impact would go towards our mission of inclusion in the local heritage. So I thank our Cultural and Heritage Department for shepherding this forward. And now we will have roundtable. We'll start with Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. A few things. So as with several other councillors, went to FCM, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in Ottawa last week. Great event, got to attend a lot of great sessions. A couple that stuck out to me, where there was one on bike, sorry, bike parks and the liability surrounding them. And there was, went over a couple of court cases in Ontario regarding some, some liability there and to overcome that. And then it went to some really good sessions, talking about some of the infrastructure and learning about dealing with some of the infrastructure deficits happening across the country. And it was just a really good chance to network and meet some great people from elected officials from across the nation and find out what's ailing their communities and what they're doing to solve that. Other than that, this weekend, I was able to bring greetings to the Highland Games on behalf of council. I attended with Counselor Thieson and Counselor McLean, and great cultural event in the city, and great to see them continue to do well. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. So I'm just going to speak on FCM as well, to highlight a few things. We, as per usual, we did have the leaders of our, of our federal parties speak, three of them anyway, and a minister and the other. So that was always interesting. I attended two study tours. One was on good food in schools and partnerships with municipalities in that regard. The other one was to the Innovation Center. It's an amazing facility and project in Ottawa. I also did a, oh, I wanted to talk about the FCM resolutions, because we don't often share them with thousands of watchers to our council meeting. So we did four. One was site selection criteria for federal offices. So we're asking the federal government to look at specific criteria when choosing to select sites for federal services, or in taking away from communities those services. And so that was supported. Federal leadership on cost share in infrastructure programs, we're urging the federal government to insist the provinces buck up with their percentage of grants when we have the federal provincial and municipal infrastructure grants available. Third one was intergovernmental dialogue on poverty reduction. Just to remind the provincial government to look at provinces and areas, because poverty is different in different locations in Canada. So make sure that there's a full and robust dialogue before they come up with their policy, with their, yeah, ultimate policy. And finally, similar to one of our motions tonight, free and fair trade software lumber. Again, I was supporting and urging the federal government to, to support our software lumber industry in the negotiation with the United States. So that, that, those were kind of the, the main. So I think, oh, I want to mention the closing speaker was John Montgomery. So if you remember him from the 2010 Olympics? He was a good speaker, but, no, no but, but what I, what I really enjoyed about it, because he had a video of his gold medal-winning race on his skeleton, and it just caused me to relive, relive that moment, which is always good, good for the, good for the heart. He was very proud, but the whole audience was proud for him as well. Thank you.
I would just remind everyone that it's just two weeks away from Municipal Government Day, which will feature a live concert down in Musquesee Park, free. Tim Hicks. It's going to be our biggest municipal government day ever, and I think it's going to be hugely exciting. So Counselor Thieson, over to you.
I always thought that the municipal government day that I rewrote the songs to "We Didn't Start the Fire" and sang it for municipal government workers everywhere was the biggest municipal government day ever, but now I've been topped. Well, guys, obviously I'm wearing this, so you know what I'm going to talk about. So I will tell you, from May 30th to June 4th, all the council was gone. So I had the honor and the distinction of being the self-proclaimed king of the rodeo at the stomped. I kicked off the event, helped kick off the event at the bust-out barbecue, and then proceeded to give away five bikes to children running the kiddie calf scramble at, at the stomped. You know, it's truly an honor. This year, I spent more time at the stomped than I have in my life. I was claiming to our man assistant who works very closely with the executive committee on the stomped, Bernie Benson, I said, I think I spent 20 hours. I did the math. There's only about 15 hours that I spent at the stomped over five days, which is pretty good. I got to see two really awesome acts of kindness. Two kids won bikes and then gave them to their cousins in two days in a row on the Friday and the Saturday. For the festivities, I was joined by many dignitaries, as well as the mayor for a couple of days as part of the event. I do have to admit, though, and a big thank you and a shout out to Terry Ellen Sudnick for giving away the bike for me on the fifth day, as I was a little late running from a TED Talks event that I was emceeing. Didn't make it in time, so she gave me a stack of about 25 cowboy hats signed by Kelly Sutherland and I'd say about 200 pounds of candy to give out in the, in the grandstand. So I was busy for an hour and a half. I wasn't one of those smiley, here you go, here, take the bike and leave events. It was very, very awesome. And the, the action on the track at the stomped was really, really good as well. I do want to also point out for council, if ever you want to feel special, wear a yellow suit and go to the opening day of Seniors Week for the proclamation kickoff event. I don't know how many times I got told I was so bright and by the little old ladies, and handsome too, you know, made a guy feel really, really good. It was an honored event to, to talk with the seniors and to get their perspective on, on anything that, that we found like-minded to, to talk about. And finally, yes, last night, Carter Rowney, Sexmas-owned, the Grand Prairie Storms-owned, Grand Prairie Region's own Pittsburgh Penguin was able to hoist the Stanley Cup. And this guy said it at the start of the playoffs, that he was going to do it, and I hear he's saying it again at the end of the playoffs, that he did it. I watched him hold the cup. I watched him say he's going to bathe his little newborn in the cup and probably drink out of it afterwards. What a guy. And I hope he's going to bring it back here to the Grand Prairie region so that we can see the Stanley Cup live and in person in the Peace Region, I believe, for the first time in history. So to Carter Rowney and the Pittsburgh Penguins, you're all Grand Prairie in our heart over here, and congratulations on a job well done. Take it away.
So I'll speak to a couple of events, and only a couple, because it was a busy last couple of weeks for council. One is on due night for the 43X discussions with government workers. Couple of ones I Couple of ones that came out of this, because one thing I realized, ask them the questions, that the government is actually sucking of getting the information out to the people in a way with signs and that, like they used to, and that we have to go higher to let them know what's happening. So a couple came out of that was Grand Cash to Hinton is getting, basically going to have shoulders, they're going to build the shoulders, so anybody goes to Jasper and our tourism ministry, and they're going to pave over a hundred kilometers starting this year and next year. That's big news for city Grand Prairie residents and area. GPTGC is going to get fifty-five kilometers of new pavement and thicker pavement, because they find out the work they did two years ago from all the big trucks we're having out there, it's not enough, and they have to thicken the pavement. So out of that fifty-five kilometers from Calcutta to Cutbank, it'll be about thirty kilometers of passing lanes. That's very, very good news for our residents. They're looking into, as we all know, another bridge and two lanes going south, or have four lanes, so two, two-lane pass roads. So that could be basically what we're hearing, you know, progressive could be three, but five to seven years out population and growth, but they know, they know it's much needed, the energy stuff that's coming here, it's huge. So I'll finish up on that one, I just wish the government would announce it even better to the public, I think they could do a better job. So then I'll announce on June first to fifth, we had the FCM. Couple of things I'll take away from that, number one, the prime minister showed up again in a row, twice in a row, and five times in a row, three times when he was the leader of the federal Liberals. So that's very good, he takes a lot of, he listens to the FCM and he's showing responsibility by showing up. And another one I'll speak to is, oh, and to finish off is, there's a challenge made by the prime minister in his speech about smart cities, and I think we are there, we just got to add a bit, and this is to staff, and I think staff, we got solar buses, solar things happening, apps, there's a challenge of fifty million for bigger cities, ten million, five million, five million, and two million for average, and there's probably about six of these that could be related for us. Not for us, not the fifty million, but we have a chance, just like every other community, it's a competition that I think came from the States and the government noticed it. And so I think we're there, we just got to touch up and spruce up, and I think we have a chance to win some monies. So anyways, that's a challenge to all the communities across Canada, and I hope we put forward to the challenge. The other, the other two I want to speak to of, I always say it's ALS had a proclamation reading, Counselor Chris Thiessen did the proclamation reading that day. But I'm just going to say this, when you walk it, I ended up walking it to six kilometers of it, there was three and six kilometers, they had little signs spread out, the effects that's happened in our country, and one of them was two people die of this disease every day in Canada. So that one stuck out on me of walking around the reservoir a couple of times. So that job well done, I think they raised about sixteen thousand dollars. So I have two more left here. One I was very proud of, I did not participate in it, but I was there at the finish, near the finishing line, my wife Tina and Kendrick Kara, it's the first Color Me Happy Fund Run in Musquesee Park, this has been happening in other cities around Grand Prairie. They had over five hundred individuals that showed up for this. Their, their goal was to raise twenty thousand from this event for Isabel Campbell Playground. We noticed the government's paying for a couple of them now, but some fell through that construction loop and they have to find a way to pay for them. So I hope they did raise that, but just from the smiles on the faces and the parents, I can see where this is going to be a tradition, and it's going to grow in our community. So job well done. And my final one is to the city manager, Bob, congrats for putting yourself in that wheelchair for a day, I've been six and a half years, and because of scheduling that, I haven't been able to do it, but I, I know other councillors and the mayor have, and I think that was really good, and that was well noticed. Thank you.
You turn your mic on, maybe?
Where are we here? It was a busy couple of weeks, but a lot of the busyness had nothing to do with the city of Grand Prairie, so I'll just mention something that is near and dear to my heart. That was that during this last couple of weeks, I attended two organizations, PACE and the John Howard Society, both are tremendously valuable social service agencies, both of them do a tremendous job in our community, and I'm really proud to say that I've been on their two boards, I think for a matter of years now, not quite making it decades, but years, and so I take the opportunity to publicly congratulate them.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rice. Just a couple of quick things, I also, with many other councillors around the table, attended FCM this year in Ottawa. It was my first time attending the conference, and I thoroughly enjoyed many of the sessions. Two that, in particular, that stuck out to me, I attended a great session on reconciliation, and the city of Edmonton, amongst some other cities, spoke about their partnerships with First Nations people and opportunities within the municipality. And as well, I attended a session on anti-poverty, and really thought that that session was really well done and really well put together. And then on another note, this past Friday, I attended the annual fundraiser for the Odyssey Sunrise House, it was a golf tournament, and it was cold and raining, but I think they'll confirm next week, but they had a record year fundraising again. So congratulations to all those volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of council for your patience this evening. Mr. Nickely, do you have any words of wisdom to end us on?
No words of wisdom, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Eddie Close, meeting adjourned.